Good evening. Today is December 19, 2011, and I will call this meeting of the Norfolk City Council to order. This is an open meeting act, and posted in the northwest corner of this room is the actual open meeting act made accessible certainly to all members of the public for their reading. I would ask if you would stand and join us in a moment of silence on the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will continue with roll call. Foye?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Miren?
Here.
Brenneman?
Here.
House?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Okay, and I would ask for approval of the consent agenda that was presented.
You make the motion, Your Honor.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
And as well, I would ask for approval of the full agenda that was provided you in your packet.
Start moving, Your Honor.
Second.
A motion with a second for approval of the full agenda. Again, if you will please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right, and under Presentations, we'll look for a recreation update.
Your Honor and council, they're continuing to work best they can through the weather, and blessed with pretty decent weather. We got the floor of the mechanical building poured last week, and hopefully you're going to start seeing some backing going down on some of the buildings, on the multi-use building as far as starting the roof structure, so we can get that all tied up hopefully by the end of January, get that all completely enclosed as well, so they can continue their interior work. So, they're continuing to make progress. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about Veterans Memorial Park.
Shane, are the pool pours all completed?
They're not quite complete, are they, Dennis?
No, we have, all of the floor is poured except for one section that, it's all zero depth around there, so it could be a springtime pour without impacting any of their scheduling. They've poured, oh, forty to, around forty percent of the walls on the recreational pool, the one where the slides come into and has a diving hopper. It's my understanding they're going to pour three more sections on Wednesday of this week, which will get it down to, I think they'll have like three pieces that they'll have to fill in to complete all the walls on that building, or that pool, then they'll move over and start working on walls on the wave pool as well. Most of the steel is tight, so it's a matter of the carpenters doing their forming and then finding some halfway decent days to do some pouring, and the, that last section of the pool floor probably won't happen unless they get some, you know, a couple of two, three days forecast of forty degree, forty, fifty degree temperatures and not getting terribly cold overnight, so, thank you.
Any other questions at all, council? Okay, then we'll go right into a public hearing tonight at the request of Pettit Plumbing and Heating for a zoning change from I-1, which is Light Industrial, to C-2, Central Business, at 332 Northwestern Avenue. I will open this hearing, and I will look to staff to maybe give us a little update on what's going on here.
Mayor, council will be glad to do that. This request tonight comes before us on the request of Mr. Primrose and Pettit for this particular zoning change. This has been a long series of conversations and negotiations over a long period of time trying to figure out a way to get some development on this particular street. This is an undersized parcel, obviously carved out many, many years ago, and subject to all the appropriate setback and landscaping provisions in the codes, very difficult to find a buildable solution to that location. These two gentlemen have been working hard to try to find a way to build a new building in that location, expand their business, and do some positive things down in that neighborhood, and this zoning change before you tonight is a result of those discussions. I believe that they're in the audience tonight and will certainly present their own particular views on what they want to do and how they want to do that, but as a result of all those conversations and a lot of staff work from, from the guys working on this, we got into where we're at tonight to bring this presentation forward so they can do their project.
Right.
So, I guess I'll, in an effort to not repeat, I'll allow them the opportunity to address you all, and Trent and I will try to answer your questions the best we can.
Okay, thanks. This is an open, I'm sorry, excuse me. Please come forward and speak if you wish to it.
Okay.
Please, and will you sign in for us?
My name is Dale Primrose. My partner and I own Pettit Plumbing. One of the questions under the Planning Commission recently was our intentions, we have just not too long ago purchased Midwest Plumbing and Heating, and whether this endeavor was to incorporate both of them, and it's not really our intention in our purchase of Midwest was always under the understanding that it continues to operate as a business, providing the jobs for the employees that were there, and our intention at this time is to continue to operate as a separate business. The warehouse that we hope to put up will serve both businesses, but we don't have any intention of closing Midwest or incorporating it into Pettit right at the moment. We have a warehouse at Northwestern, right across from the depot, I don't know the exact street address, and we're just outgrowing it. We're bursting at the seams because of our projects and such as made it necessary to buy in a lot bigger volume, and we're just, we're just camped all over the place over there. If we were able to rezone this lot, we hope to bring a building right out to the edge of the sidewalk encompassing basically the whole lot, it's a half lot or whatever between Hendricks and Fourth, I think. Our intention, we would hope, would be to bring the building clear out to the edge of the sidewalk and then use angle parking across the entire front so that it would complement and be the same as the next block to the east. There were major refrigeration, and there's a couple antique shops and the mint and so on, so we had hoped to put a retail and not so much retail, but a showroom in the front portion of this building, the portion that faces onto Fourth Street. My daughter runs all the logistics for us, and we would like to put her down there. She, when we sell and build a house, we meet with the customers, she meets with the customers to pick out fixtures and so on and so forth, and that would be just such a better medium for us to be able to do that rather than meeting at my kitchen table, and which has served, but we're outgrowing that situation, too. So, our hope was that we have a purchase agreement with the people that own the lot there, and they're, as far as we know, you know, behind us on this because they want to, want to move the lot and see something done with it, and that's sort of what we had hoped to do.
Any questions for Mr. Primrose while we have him here before us, council? All right, thank you.
Dale, do you plan to utilize your existing warehouse?
We hope to be able to put up, you know, something big enough so we won't have to, but we, at this point, we're, we don't really know what we're doing, we don't really plan on selling it. We had hoped to rent it to another entity so that they could use it for what we used it for. It's actually a fairly decent location for warehousing, just not really the best for retail. We share the lot there with the Eagles Club and the antique store to the west, and there's also garage access off of the alley through a big garage door and stuff, too, so it's actually, you know, it's a nice location for warehousing or for somebody in that instance, it's just, we just have more going on than we can pack into that place anymore. Thank you.
It's a good problem to have, Dale.
Yes, we're very thankful because that's been able to keep these Midwest people working and the Pettit people working.
Good. Okay, anyone else that wants to come forward and speak in favor of? Or questions? Anyone in opposition, too, that wants to come forward and speak? Okay, if not, then I will close, I'm sorry, we need a report. Beth, am I right? Okay?
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on December 6, 2011 for a zone change from I-1, Light Industrial, to C-2, Central Business, at 332 Northwestern Avenue at the request of Pettit Plumbing. Pettit's plan to relocate their office to this location and include a warehouse and retail showroom on the property. They have also purchased Midwest Plumbing across the street and are running both businesses and able to use the facilities as well. The Planning Commission was concerned about parking in the area, including heavy construction equipment. Mr. Pettit advised that construction equipment is parked offsite and service vehicles are parked only during order pickup. Parking in the area is diagonal, and the C-2 zoning allows parking in the setbacks. The Planning Commission voted nine to zero to recommend approval.
Okay, with that, I will close the hearing, and I would ask for consideration of ordinance number 5190 approving the zone change request before us tonight at 332 Northwestern Avenue at the request of Pettit Plumbing.
Your Honor, I would introduce ordinance number 5190 on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Any discussion? Hearing done then? Short title, Beth?
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5190 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5190 on second and third.
Second.
We have a motion with a second before us to suspend and take action on second and third. Any discussion at all? If not, then again, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5190 carries on second and third.
Good luck to you, gentlemen, and thanks for being here. All right, next is a public hearing to receive a report on the findings and the suggestions from the Economic Development Citizen Advisory Review Committee, which met as required by state statute. I'll open the hearing, and I believe I will look to you, Randy, to give us a report on this.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This is a requirement of statutes. Every six months, the Citizens Advisory Review Committee must meet and provide their findings and suggestions to the mayor and city council at a public hearing called for that purpose, and that's what this hearing is for. The citizens serving on the Citizens Advisory Review Committee are Bill Canham, Cindy Morrow, Jim Angles, Tammy Langen Young, and Jan Heinzpar, and I serve as an ex officio non-voting member on that committee. The CARC met on December 8, and their reports include in your agenda packets, there were six items on the CARC's agenda for the December 8 meeting, and those are outlined in the report that's in the agenda packets. First item ahead on their agenda was to review the economic development fund's finances. The economic development fund had $411,255 on October 31, and there have not yet been any expenditures made out of the economic development fund. Their second agenda item was to review the revised minimum wage level for jobs created by the economic development program. At the June CARC committee meeting, the CARC members asked staff to review the $15.03 minimum wage level that we had provided for in the city's EDP. They thought that that was too high. So, staff talked with the Nebraska Department of Labor, and we found out there were several methods they had of computing a county's average wage level, and that made it necessary for us to further define what we meant by the county's average wage level. And at the August 15 council meeting, the council adopted a resolution defining an eligible business as businesses that pay over Madison County's median wage rate is determined in the annual occupation employment statistics data released by the Nebraska Department of Labor around May 1 of each year, and that's currently $13.79. The third item on the CARC's agenda was review a proposed checklist. At their last meeting, they requested that staff develop a checklist of what they're to examine when they review the award of funds to a business and review the ongoing monitoring of the business to determine if the business continues to meet the criteria for the award of funds, for example, the number of jobs created, wages paid, that type of thing. I created a checklist for the CARC. There was a fair amount of discussion at the meeting whether that checklist was too detailed or if it could be pared back some, and I had deliberately given them a detailed checklist, thinking it would be easier to take things out of it than add things back in at the CARC meeting. And after a lot of discussion, they decided that they would leave the checklist as I had provided it with a lot of detail in it, and what we did when we reviewed the premier senior marketing project, each item on that checklist had the supporting documentation with it, and they could actually verify, yes, we've got this, we've got this, and go right down through there and look at the supporting documentation, and the consensus was to leave that checklist with that level of detail, although some committee members were thinking that it should be perhaps pared back a little bit. And as I just mentioned, their fourth item on their agenda was review the senior, premier senior marketing project, and they utilized that checklist. This was the city's first LB840 project, $155,750 of funding. Premier agrees to create climbing jobs, retain these jobs for three years with total average annual wages of $623,000. The fifth thing on the agenda was an update by Oakdale Valley Economic Development Council staff of projects ongoing that might utilize EDP funding, and they gave the CARC a brief update on those. And the final agenda item was really what the purpose of this means about is to, for the CARC, provide their suggestions and findings to the city council. And their findings were that the city's economic development program is operating in compliance with the budget and the economic development program guidelines and procedures. However, as they went through the checklist and reviewed these items, they had some recommendations or suggestions for the council's consideration as to possible amendments to the economic development program. They, first of all, suggested that we incorporate the anti-pirating provisions of statutes and the guidelines and application for funding statutes, and the city's economic development program both provide that if a business employs people in more than one community, they have to retain that employment for the two years after their application in all those cities. CARC felt that should be incorporated right into the application, and I think that's a good idea. At the meeting, I showed them a proposed application that had that in it, where the business says yes or no, or employing people other than in Norfolk, and if they answer yes, they have to check off whether they agree to maintain their employment in the other Nebraska cities. If the answer to that's no, we can't give them funding. So, I think that would be a good change to our economic development program guidelines and application. They wanted to eliminate the requirement for UCC financing statements we provide as part of the application process. Further down in the guidelines, we provide for UCC financing statements as part of the closing process if they're needed. They won't always be needed, and many times we will not be taking a lean against equipment or receivables or inventory, types of things where you'd file UCC financing statements. Instead, we'll have a mortgage against the property or deed of trust against the property. So, that really isn't appropriate in the application process. It may be appropriate as part of the closing process, and it's already in the guidelines at that point. The third recommendation they had was that we have our own job creation and retention form for applicants. For premier, we use a CDBG job creation and retention form. That's a little bit more detailed than what we need for our program, but has everything we need for our program. Worked out well for premier, but not every case will be utilizing state funding that is going to utilize the city's EDP, so we need our own form. I've created one of those, the committee reviewed that, and liked that, and will be bringing that forward to the council at a future date. The other suggestion they made was to change Section 4.1 of the economic development program where we reference application documents, and there it says economic development council staff will have in that list off a whole long list of things, and there's really not, it's not clear that they have flexibility to waive some of those requirements if it looks like it's appropriate. For instance, when we were reviewing premier, they did not have a formal business plan and pro forma financial statements. The state didn't require those, and the bank wasn't requiring those. We were given the smallest amount of funding, $155,000, where they were getting $500,000 from the state and much more than that from the bank. It seemed that we were kind of going overboard in that particular case for this ongoing business that, you know, had good financials. So, the Assistant Advisory Review Committee thought it should be made clear that in the guidelines, there is some flexibility given to Oakdale Valley Economic Development Council staff as to what is required. In most cases, you probably will want, for example, a business plan and pro forma financial statements, but not in all cases. So, that was another recommendation they made. And then finally, there were some spelling errors in the economic development program guidelines and procedures, and recommended correcting of those. And so, at some point in time, we'll be bringing forward proposed amendments to the guidelines for the council's consideration. As you can see, the CARC is taking their job seriously, and they're doing what statutes say they're supposed to be doing. They're reviewing the function of the city's economic development program and providing their findings and suggestions to mayor and council for your consideration. So, I think they're doing a fine job, and I'd be glad answering questions you might have.
Appreciate your lead in this, Randy, certainly. I know that it's, you know, this is all new to all of us, and again, we just want to stay safe in what it is we're doing, so, and I do, I had a comment by one of the members, and it's a learning experience for them, too, and they accept it as a huge responsibility and realize why they are there, is nothing more than to be the overseers of and to make sure that we're staying safe. So, I appreciate all your efforts on there, too. Any other questions or anyone else?
Randy, could you just go over the anti-pirating provisions again for me, please?
Yes.
Just the highlights of them?
Statutes say if a business applies for economic development program funding from the LB840 program, that's any LB840 program in state, not just Norfolk, this is statewide, and they employ people in another Nebraska city or cities, they must maintain employment for two years in those other Nebraska cities at the level that they had employment in those cities in the year preceding their application to that city's economic development program for funding. So, if, in case of premier, they have some employees in Columbus, they have to maintain that employment in Columbus for two years. They can't decrease that employment. The whole idea being the state didn't want cities fighting with each other for these jobs and getting into bidding wars with the LB840 public dollars, so they specifically put that into statutes to prohibit that type of thing, that you could not say, we're giving LB840 money to you, please come to our city and leave Nebraska City X over here to come to Norfolk, Nebraska. That was something that the legislature did not feel was appropriate, incorporated in statutes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Anyone? This is, anyone else in the public that may want to come forward and speak or have questions of this, as it is a public hearing? Okay, if not, then I will close the hearing, and again, thanks for all your efforts on this, Randy. You heard that he'll be back before us in the future with recommendations on the suggested findings and changes to the regulations. So, with that, on our regular agenda, I would ask for consideration of ordinance number 5191 authorizing issuance of $735,000 of combined utility revenue funding bonds to refund the Series 1999 Combined Utility Revenues Bonds.
Your Honor, I would introduce ordinance number 5191.
Second.
Okay, a motion with a second, looking for discussion, and again, I think we're going to turn to you on this, Randy.
Yes, Your Honor. As you indicated, this is a refunding bond issue. It will refund the 99 Series Combined Utility Bonds. This is a, not a normal combined utility bond that's being refunded, it's a note with the State Department of Environmental Quality. These bonds are just a single note with the EQ. They have a 3% interest rate on that note and a 1% annual administration fee, so it's equivalent to a 4% interest rate. We're able to refund these bonds, as you can see in the agenda packet, set at substantially lower interest rate, interest rates ranging from four tenths of a percent on the short end to one and a quarter on the longer bonds with an average interest rate just over 1%. That will result in a net present value savings of almost $43,000 or 6.6% of the refunded principal, well within our refunding guidelines, and since interest rates are based on approval of tonight's council meeting, I recommend passage of the ordinance on all three readings. Bruce Lussford from Emeritus is here tonight, and he or I can answer any questions you might have.
Pretty simple explanation, but certainly understandable. So, anything, Bruce, you want to add to this at all, or?
Yeah.
Do we look to you to be our council that is advising us of this, or is Randy the guy that's out there always looking, finding these?
We look for the opportunities and present them to Randy.
Great, appreciate that. All right, any other discussion on this at all?
The fee is 1%, is that correct?
Correct.
Is that, is that normal? Is that normally negotiated? How do you, how do you come up with a 1%?
That 1% fee is DEQ's fee, the 1% I was referring to, and I believe...
I think our discount's 1% actually.
1% is here beyond this issue also. We have an agreement with Emeritus that outlines what fees are going to charge based on whether or not it's a refunding issue or a revenue issue or a GO issue, the length of time the issue's out, maturity on this issue, this issue is a fairly short issue. It's a revenue issue, so it tends to make that fee a little lower. It's a revenue issue, which makes it a little bit higher than a GO issue, but that's kind of where we're at, is, and that agreement is an old agreement. I think it's been expired, but we've been just continuing to operate under that agreement and charging, Emeritus has been charging those fees, or in some cases, I believe they may even charge a little bit less.
I think we have a maximum in that fee schedule, basically. So, we have a range in that fee schedule, and this falls within that range for the type of bond, right?
The discount fee is a one-time fee.
One-time.
The fee that, with DEQ, that's an annual fee.
Yes.
So, it's a 1% of the balance of the bonds outstanding at that point in time, so it was a, the amount was decreasing over time, but it effectively added to the interest rate of 1%.
Yeah, the effect, what we pay with that 1% fee is, just like Dennis said, just like if that interest rate was 1% higher. So, it's a 3% interest rate with the 1% administration fee. So it's a 3% interest rate, but the 1% administration fee makes it really a 4% rate when you add everything together.
Thank you. Is there a maturity, a maturity time limit on the bonds? What's--
The maturity on these bonds matches the maturity of the existing refunding bonds. And if you, this one's a little strange. Normally with a refunding, if you don't extend maturities, which we're not extending maturities here, it's clear that it doesn't count towards your $10 million small issuer exemption, or $5 million small issuer exemption. They go down, goes down to five?
Five for the--
For 2012. For 2012, so. But this one, bond council's not quite, this was not required to be issued as a tax-exempt bond originally because DEQ doesn't pay taxes, so we didn't consider it a tax-exempt bond originally, so it didn't count towards our $5 million requirement back there. And I guess that makes things kind of murky according to bond councils to whether or not this counts towards our $5 million or not. But this was done as a separate standalone bond issue to keep that murkiness from affecting anything else. We didn't include it with one of, we'd originally thought about including it with the issue that you did last month and intended to do it that way until bond council said, this is kind of a murky area. We're not quite sure how the IRS is going to look at this. We recommend that you split this off and do it as a separate bond issue, separate from any of your other debt issuances. That makes more work for us, makes more work for Bruce, but it doesn't tean any other issue of, for some reason, we end up having to pay arbitrage rebate on this. Right now, it doesn't look like there's going to be any arbitrage to be made, so it's probably not an issue, but, you know, maybe, maybe interest rates will change around before this bond issue matures and we'll be earning arbitrage. So to make a short, a long answer to your short question.
Did he answer your question? Okay. All right. Anyone else with question or discussion? If not?
We all know that interpretations can change over time as far as tax. I mean, we found that out with our new, new building and now with youth sports and--
We kind of lead the way on a lot of things sometimes, don't we? Are we ready for a short title? I think so.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of Combined Utilities Revenue Refunding Bonds Series 2012 of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, in the principal amount of $735,000 for the purpose of paying and redeeming its Combined Utilities Revenue Bonds Series 1999, pledging and hypothecating the revenues and earnings of the Water Works Plant and Water System, Sanitary Sewer Plant and Sewer System, and Solid Waste Transfer Facilities owned by the city for the payment of said bonds, providing for the issuance and sale of the bonds, authorizing the delivery of the bonds to the purchaser thereof, providing for the disposition of the proceeds of said bonds, and ordering the ordinance published in pamphlet form.
And with that, if you'll please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5191 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass this on second and third reading to obtain the--
Second.
--mentioned.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and pass on second and third. Any further discussion? If not--
Seems like it's quite a substantial savings of $43,000. I think it's, the words are being passed on second and third.
I think you're right. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5191 carries on second and third.
Okay. Tonight, we have, it's a public comment period, so I will ask if there's anyone in the audience that wants to come forward and talk about anything that might be on your mind or any concern, anything positive to say. We're certainly willing to listen. I'm seeing none, so with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Somebody give me a second so I can be correct in the way I do this.
Exactly.
We are adjourned. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Your Christmas Eve, Bruce.
Thanks. Did I need them to vote?